There you go. Mayor Cierci?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hansak?
Here.
And I just want to confirm, okay, can you get everybody to hit your buttons? Thank you so much. Can close it all out for everybody? Um, I just want to confirm that councilmember Dibala can hear us. I know that she's participating in tonight's meeting virtually. So if we could just make sure that she's available. Okay, she's not on. Okay, we will, we will message her and see if we can make sure that she is able to participate if she's available. And so with that this evening, welcome, welcome, welcome. Um, the city council met in a... One second here, sorry, I have lots of pieces of paper. Okay. Give me one second. The city council met earlier today at 6:30. I'm just trying to find my statement. Administrative session, okay. I'm going to move into... Okay. So the city council met today at 6:30. In an administrative function to continue the evaluation of outside legal firms to perform an independent audit. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public and I will say that the council has gotten to the point where we've identified a shortlist of potential legal firms that we would like to invite to interview with the council. So I do want to make sure that members of the public are aware of the progress that we are making. In terms of the agenda for this evening, there are no changes to the agenda. We'll start with a proclamation for the, for the record of Gun Violence Awareness Day. It is wear orange and is why I am wearing an orange t-shirt that says enough. And it is in recognition of the need to end gun violence. The voting session this evening, the first item will be first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter 6.08 Rental Housing Licenses and Owner Occupied Group House Registrations. We will then have a number of work sessions this evening. The first is a submission of the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund or NED grant application. We'll then have the FY25 budget amendment number four. Followed by the renewal of contract for engineering services with Rommel Klepper and Khan Call. Then the contract for architectural and contract administration services with Bignan Watkins Hasser. And then finally, the renewal of service with equipment contracts with Axon. In terms of upcoming meetings on Wednesday, June the 11th, the council will have a present, two presentations. The first is a Maple Avenue Connectivity Project presentation. Followed by the Community Quality of Life Grant recommendations. We will then have a number of voting sessions. The first is the second reading ordinance amending... Have the right one? Uh, the second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter 6.08 Rental Housing Licenses and Owner Occupied Group House Registrations. First reading ordinance approving the FY26 budget amendment number four. Single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a service and equipment contract with Axon. Single reading ordinance authorizing renewal of contract for engineering services with Rommel Klepper and Khan Call. The single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for architectural and contract administration services with Bignan Watkins Hasser. For the community, yeah, for Bignan Watkins Hasser. The resolution authorizing submission of the FY26 state revitalization grant program applications. And then the work session, rent stabilization policy review scope of work. On Sunday, June the 15th is Father's Day. On Wednesday, June the 18th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a presentation, a Purple Line Connector Grant, New Ave Bike Way project presentation. Voting session, second reading ordinance approving the FY26 budget amendment number four. Single reading ordinance approving the F Y 26 budget amendment number four. Single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a service and equipment contract with Axon. Single reading ordinance approving the community quality of life grant recommendations. Single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for architectural and contract administration services with Bignan Watkins Hasser. For the community, yeah, for Bignan Watkins Hasser. The resolution authorizing submission of the FY26 state revitalization grant program applications. And then the work session, rent stabilization policy review scope of work. On Sunday, June the 15th is Father's Day. On Wednesday, June the 18th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a presentation, a Purple Line Connector Grant, New Ave Bike Way project presentation. Voting session, second reading ordinance approving the FY26 budget amendment number four. Single reading ordinance approving the community quality of life grant recommendations. Single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for summer lunch and learn services. And then we will have a work session regarding contract for library solar panels. On Thursday, June the 19th is Juneteenth. City offices and facilities are closed for the Juneteenth holiday, but I encourage you to celebrate with us at the Juneteenth event in the city. On Sunday, June the 22nd through Wednesday, June the 25th, the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference will be taking place in Ocean City. And therefore, Wednesday, June the 25th, the city council will not meet. And so with that, I am going to move into our proclamation for this evening. Declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded. With an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, in the average year, 805 people in Maryland die and 1,745 are wounded by guns. Of these, 34% of the gun deaths are suicides and 64% are homicides. And whereas, gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities. And cities across the nation are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from those who are a danger to themselves or others. And whereas, mayors, councilmembers, and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it. And are best positioned to understand how to keep their residents safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 6, 2025, to recognize her 28th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes, symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 6, 2025, people across the United States will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And now, and now therefore be proclaimed that I, Talisha Cierci, mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, declare Friday, June 6, 2025, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. And encourage all residents to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. With that, we will move to our public comments on voting items. And just as a reminder, the voting item this evening is the first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park on voting items this evening. Wonderful. We will move to general public comments. Do you have any general public comments this evening?
Remember, Dibala can hear us. I know that she's participating in tonight's meeting virtually. So if we could just make sure that she's available. Okay, she's not on. Okay, we will, we will message her and see if we can make sure that she is able to participate if she's available. And so with that this evening, welcome, welcome, welcome. The city council met in a... Give me one second here. Sorry, I have lots of pieces of paper. Okay. All right, let me look this up. Give me one second. The city council met earlier today at 6:30. I'm just trying to find my statement. Administrative session, okay. Okay, I'm gonna move into... So the city council met today at 6:30 in an administrative function to continue the evaluation of outside legal firms to perform an independent audit. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public, and I will say that the council has gotten to the point where we've identified a shortlist of potential legal firms that we would like to invite to interview with the council. So I do want to make sure that members of the public are aware of the progress that we are making. In terms of the agenda for this evening, there are no changes to the agenda. We'll start with a proclamation for the, for the record of Gun Violence Awareness Day. It is wear orange. It is why I am wearing an orange tee shirt that says enough. And it is in recognition of the need to end gun violence. The voting session this evening, the first item will be first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter 6.08, rental housing licenses and owner occupied group house registrations. We will then have a number of work sessions this evening. The first is a submission of the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, or NED, grant application. We'll then have the FY25 budget amendment number four, followed by the renewal of contract for engineering services with Rommel Klepper and Khan, Call. Then the contract for architectural and contract administration services with Bignan Watkins Hasser. And then finally, the renewal of service with equipment contracts with Axon. In terms of upcoming meetings, on Wednesday, June the 11th, the council will have a present, two presentations. The first is a Maple Avenue Connectivity Project presentation, followed by the Community Quality of Life Grant Recommendations. We will then have a number of voting sessions. The first is the second reading ordinance amending... Did I have the right one? The second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter 6.08, rental housing licenses, licenses and owner occupied group house registrations. First reading ordinance approving the FY26 budget amendment number four, single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a service and equipment contract with Axon, single reading ordinance authorizing renewal of contract for engineering services with Rommel Klepper and Khan, Call. The single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for architectural and contract administration services with Bignall Watkins Hasser for the community, yeah, for Bignall Watkins Hasser. The resolution authorizing submission of the FY26 state revitalization grant program applications. And then the work session, rent stabilization policy review scope of work. On Sunday, June the 15th is Father's Day. On Wednesday, June the 18th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a presentation, a Purple Line Connector Grant, Nuaf Bikeway present, project presentation. Voting session, second reading ordinance approving the FY26 budget amendment number four, single reading ordinance approving the community quality of life grant recommendations, single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for summer lunch and learn services. And then we will have a work session regarding contract for library solar panels. On Thursday, June the 19th, is Juneteenth. City offices and facilities are closed for the Juneteenth holiday, but I encourage you to celebrate with us at the Juneteenth event in the city. On Sunday, June the 22nd through Wednesday, June the 25th, the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference will be taking place in Ocean City. And therefore, Wednesday, June the 25th, the city council will not meet. And so with that, I am going to move into our proclamation for this evening. Declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, in the average year, 805 people in Maryland die and 1,745 are wounded by guns. Of these, 34% of the gun deaths are suicides and 64% are homicides. And whereas, gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities and cities across the nation are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from those who are a danger to themselves or others. And whereas, mayors, council members and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their residents safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 6, 2025, to recognize her 28th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes, symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 6, 2025, people across the United States will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And now, and now therefore be proclaimed that I, Talisha Seersey, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, declare Friday, June 6, 2025, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all residents to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. With that, we will move to our public comments on voting items. And just as a reminder, the voting item this evening is the first reading ordinance amending Tacoma... Some voting items this evening, wonderful. We will move to general public comments. Do you have any general public comments this evening? Give me one second. There you go.
Oh, thank you again. I'm Terry Siemens. I live at 149 Ritchie Avenue. I'm a past Tacoma Park Council member and a current member of the Chief Advisory Board. I was disappointed to hear someone say that they discount what members of the board say because they are just cheerleaders for the police. Obviously, the person who said that speaks without gathering facts before forming an opinion. When I joined the council in 1999, one of the most frequent concerns that I heard from my ward four constituents was that Tacoma Park Police often used excessive force when dealing with minorities. I spent many months talking with residents, business owners, police officers, both city officers and officers from other jurisdictions, to gain an informed understanding of our police department. I then used what I learned to take action to address some of the problems I had found. After developing an understanding of the police, Tacoma Park policing, I realized it was the culture of the police department that needed changing. As I mentioned last week, I worked with my council colleagues to write a resolution defining what we want the police culture to look like and what type of chief we want in Tacoma Park. That approach has worked remarkably well. Chief Dival has moved his department's culture to more closely align with our vision and with the character of our progressive city. When I left the council, I joined the Chief Advisory Board to help to continue to address improvements, not to be a cheerleader. The Public Safety Task Force did an excellent job of developing a menu of steps that can address policing problems across the country. Chief Dival followed many of these steps as he reformed our department to match the character of the community, that the community wants. Now, my advice to the council is to talk with people to find out how our department is doing and where we still have challenges. Rather than viewing the command staff and the other fine men and women of the police department with a skeptical eye, talk with them to learn their perspectives so you can help to address problems and challenges that may exist in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wallace, Ward 1. I actually wasn't expecting to talk today, but I did want to mention one thing about... I haven't read the ordinance remending Tacoma Park Code Chapter 6.08, rental housing licenses and owner occupied group house. But I have round an Airbnb in my house a long time ago, but I, for many, many years, and I had people staying from all over the world with me, about 200, not at the same time. And it was an amazing, wonderful experience. I was always registered as an owner occupied group home because they stayed with me for more than a month, sometimes up to six months. They were students, they were, people worked at embassies, at hospitals, just a wide range of people. I really, it's really, really important that when you do that, that you actually do register your home because it really is for the safety of not just yourself, but also the people who are staying with you. I was actually adamant about that that be included in, several years ago, I was like a staunch advocate of, of that registration. Now, I'm not doing that, but, but somebody who's more my age might want to move into my home. That, in the traditionally, I think a lot of people in Tacoma Park or around the world, anyway, think if you do that, these, it's, doesn't subject you to those requirements. But based on the requirements of owner occupied group home, if you're sharing space with somebody who's not a relative and who is, and you're going to be sharing the facilities and the kitchen and living together, that's an owner occupied group home, for me. I mean, as long as the owner lives there. So it's really important you understand, that everybody at Tacoma Park, understand that you really need to be registered for when you invite somebody into your home, and maybe it's even a Lucy Goosey kind of a, a thing, or students living together, it's owner occupied group home. And it's real important because you, you check the safety of that home for everybody that's involved. So I just want to say, and again, I don't know what the ordinance says, sorry, but I just want to make sure that everybody does know that it's an important thing. And last week, or no, two weeks ago, I mentioned that maybe you could use patrols on the buses i- if we end up having to bus our students at PVEs to a host school. And then another residence said that they already have patrols over at the school, which I didn't know. But they're, they are already in the school. There's about 40 patrols already at PVEs. And they help, but, but I sent the information to the Vice President, Vice President, Vice Principal, and he thought putting them on the buses might be a good idea in the future. So I just want to let people know, we already have patrols. And maybe you could go talk to them and show them they can become mayors and city council members as well. We know who you are.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments? Okay, do we have, I believe we have virtual public comments? Okay, Ms. Machui? Ms. Machui, can you hear us?
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Machui, we can hear you.
Thank you. You can't see me. I don't know how to make myself visible. But thank you. I thank you for allowing this to happen, the virtual comment. As I'm getting older, I appreciate it more. And the process is you start your video. Okay. Oh, there I am. Thank you. Not that it's great. I'm sorry, I don't have sunburn. I have rosacea. That's why my face is so red. I just want to explain. Anyways, I started Parents with Special Needs Adults in 2015, 10 years ago. And the housing, we're trying to get housing, employment, recrea- recreation, and safety for our, our loved ones with special needs. So far, the only one of, that's been addressed in training of the police department. I want to thank you for that. I, I don't understand what, why, why eight years ago, when I asked for the Department of Recreation, why couldn't people with disabilities go for $5, which is the cost for seniors, no matter how much they make, to take the senior classes? Why can't they go to the senior classes for only $5? And they said, no, we have to go to the council. Council has to approve that. Well, here I am, and I went to the council and it still hasn't. It seems like the council blames it on the Department of Recreation. The Department of Recreation blames it on the council and so forth, and goes in a circle. And that's just one of the minor things. Employment is, is really important since my son lost his job last, about four months ago. And it's very, very difficult to find a job if you have autism, believe me, especially if you're like my son, you're biracial. I mean, and, and he has that particular, his father was from Kenya and was shot in the head years ago. And he, he can't, because of that, a fa- a father was in the hunt. They wouldn't give us benefits. They only give benefits to a single woman. And, and, and I had to get rid of my husband to get help for my son. It was like a circular stupid thing, but, you know, but, but, and I, and I just wanted to thank, thank the police for having the CIT racist intervention training again. And thank you very much and continue. I hope everyone gets that. And please, please have a little empathy. How about the housing and employment? I mean, that would really, really, really help, okay? Just little things. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Machui. Okay, seeing we have no additional public comments this evening, we're going to move into council comments. Everyone bear with us. We, we have these fantastic new mics. But it is like operating a plane up here for me. Okay, I think that means Council Member, Council Member Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping one of my colleagues would go first, and I didn't want to start on a somber note, but the death notification. The police department lost one of its former communications operators. She was a supervisor, as a matter of fact, Sheriff Skabicki. She served with the police department from the late 90s to early 2000s. And she was one of, if not the best communications operators we've ever had. And she, eventually she married one of our police sergeants, Sergeant Richard Skabicki, who also has passed away. So she leaves behind a daughter and a son, Hannah and Philip. Philip is a green belt police officer. And rest in peace, Cheryl. She was definitely a beacon of light for this police department. And she'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Gilbert. Council Member Hansak?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the three speakers who came out tonight. Really appreciate you being here. Just three things this evening. First and foremost, thank you to everybody who came out for the Flower Avenue Block Party last weekend. We had big, big thunderstorms that came and went, and so officially it was canceled. But beautifully, as this community does so well, it kind of, kind of, sort of happened anyway, mostly because of the beautiful children in our community who wanted to perform so badly that they said, please, please, could we just perform in between the storms? So, so we actually had three of our youth groups end up performing one after another. The Yunetta Dance Academy of Ethiopian American Youth giving a fashion show and, and also playing some lovely Ethiopian instruments. I wish I knew what it was called. Coco's Hip Hop Dance Group from our own Tacoma Park Community Center. And, and then the Rolling Terrace Latin dancers in their blue sparkling beautiful outfits doing salsa. And, and I want to thank especially since I'm looking at our city staff here, thank you to our city staff for coming out. I know you showed up and then we had to turn you away, so we're hoping we can get you to come out again. And, and, and we're sorry for the last minute notice. And thank you to the sponsors, Cheer, Discover Long Branch, and Healing Practice Counseling, and all of the county and community groups, and Washington Adventist University, who also came out and had to be turned away. And finally, there was a Flower Avenue sticker winner, one of our local youth. All, all of the winners and the honorable mentions were from Rolling Terrace. And Ms. Wade, the art teacher there, got about 40 or 50 applicants to apply. So it was really, really a neat collaboration, a beautiful day. And thank you, Mayor Seersey, for sticking it out through the entire thing. And Lord Charcutian joined us as well, so hopefully some, some others, I know people wanted to come and then they thought we were canceled, so did we. So, and also today was Blair graduation. I happened to be there because my son was graduating, but I just want to congratulate. I saw a bunch of residents from Ward 5 and from Tacoma Park at large. So congratulations to all of our wonderful graduates. And, and then I want to shout out a welcome to our five scouts and scout leader who are sitting in the back of our auditorium. I wish the camera could show you. They're all in their uniforms, and I invited them to come up and speak, but I think they're feeling a little bit shy. So, welcome. I hope that you find a question you can ask us by the end of the night or email it to us.
Thank you, Council Member Hansak. And it was indeed a very fun Flower Avenue. It was the, it was the best canceled event ever. Council Member Landman?
Thank you. I was thinking about what President Trump said when he said, "I alone can fix it." And I went to the Flower Avenue event to try and fix things, and they sent me away again. So now I'm really bummed that I missed the street party. Tonight, while we are meeting at the same time, many residents and parents are probably next door attending the fourth of the series of meetings about the future of Piney Branch Elementary School facilities, including the school itself, the gym and the pool, all of which interest us on this council, I think, a great deal as well. And I hope that we are soon going to be finished the process of reviewing the public comments about the various design options that are under consideration so that we, as a council, it's my hope, can go on the record in support of swift improvement of that very dilapidated facility and with an effective plan to relocate students temporarily that deals with some of the challenges of dislocation and for a pool and a full-sized gym, which we now have, and I believe we deserve to continue to have when this process is over. So I wanted to let people know that that's at least on my mind, and I think probably many other council members as well. I wanted to respond to Terry Siemens's comment about the police chief's advisory panel. I'm certainly aware of the need to form my own views about the police command staff and officers and have gone about the process of becoming better informed by participating in the excellent police academy. But I just want to state that, in my view, that does not take away from the fact that the task force did recommend that we have an independent panel, standing panel, to advise the council, not the chief, but the council, about police matters, and that I thought that was a good idea. And that was the gist of the comment that was made at our last council meeting. So I just wanted to flag my views on that. And finally, I wanted to say how great the Pride Parade and Street Festival were last weekend. Tacoma Park really was at its best in showing how much it supports all of our residents. And we had so many people, they could not possibly have all been from Tacoma Park, gathering to celebrate with us. So I think it really shows how important it is for us to stand up and be counted, especially given the national political situation. So my thanks to the city staff and all the residents and volunteers who made such a great pride event last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Landman. Council Member Dibala, I see your hand. I think you're muted. Okay, we're going to, Council Member Dibala, we're going to come back to you. Council Member Weslek.
Good evening. Just thinking, okay, this past weekend, I too really enjoyed Pride. It was great to be out there with so many families and kids. My daughter had a great time. Fortunately, my other daughter was six. My wife had to stay home, but we, Lena and I still showed up. Thanks for all that were there. And also, I want to give a special shout out to Laura Barclay from Main Street Tacoma because not only did they put on the Pride, Tacoma Pride, they also organized the Saturday Tacoma Truck Garden, Truck Garden, which was also in and out of rainstorms, but was a great event. And, oh, this is partly in response to Ms. Wallace's comments. Next week, I will be speaking at Tacoma Park Elementary School for their career day about being a council member. And if anyone has tips on how to impress kindergarteners with this job, I will gladly take those tips. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Member Weslek. Council Member Dibala, I think we can hear you now.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusing button pushing here. So a few things. First, thank you for the proclamation, Mayor, about gun violence. What strikes me compared to seven years ago when you and I started is how many of us now have a, a direct or a one-removed connection to gun violence that maybe we didn't have a few years ago. And in my case, it's the shooting in Annapolis in the, in the Baltimore Sun, in the newspaper. So not to dwell on that, but it started with one person, and now it's just spread. And so I am sort of wearing orange in, out of respect. But two other things, Pride was amazing. The film on Friday night for Gabe Wiseman, the Weisenstein, the, White, Weisenstein, the, the baseball coach and league founder was also amazing and well-attended. So thank you to the folks who put it on, the public art, this, the public art coordinator for the city. I will be attending the Chesapeake Local Government Action Committee. I will be attending the Chesapeake Local Government Action Committee meetings tomorrow. And um, the topic will be to hear what the governors have decided about some of the goals for the future of the program. So it's kind of a big meeting. And then over the summer, there'll be a public comment period for residents who are interested. Just get in touch with me. And last but not least, go Blair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dabala. Any other, okay, Councilmember Schlegel?
Uh, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Gilbert, about Ms. Sabicki? Sabicki? And um, you so often pause to appreciate individual people in our community and, and the ripple effects that they have. And I'm very grateful to you for doing that. And um, I think that um, former Councilmember Siemens, you were also expressing that uh, that kind of sentiment um in talking about the need to remember that all of the staff in the police department are people. And, and um, I, I, I thank you for that, that, you know, there's a way to, that we always need to be appreciative of what staff are doing and, and to be interested in their perspectives at all times and their expertise. Ms. Wallace, I appreciated your follow-up about the importance of safety in our rental unit regulations. I think a lot of times we're thinking about pricing and all of that and costs, but ultimately, a safe home is the, is the fundamental thing we have to have. And some people don't realize that they're caught up in that because they're just, they're just helping someone out. So I appreciated that. And Ms. Machu, your, your call for care and for finding little things that can help families and adults living with special needs is very important. I was at the Tacoma Park Pride Parade and, as well. And I, I wanted to uh thank Lucy Moore for gifting me with butterfly wings that I got to flap while walking down Carroll Avenue. And to me, the message was, the best sign I saw was just love is love. And um, I, I just felt like it was so uplifting um to be part of that and to see everybody who was out. A couple of other fun pieces of news, the, the Boyd Avenue Alley Apron Fix is, is finally happening. And special thanks to uh former Councilmember Randy Gibson for patiently championing this project. And it may be that former, former Councilmember Casey Kostic had a hand in that because it went back a long way. Don't forget that uh, the Juneteenth festivities have already been mentioned, but as someone who, who grew up and, and went to high school in DC, backyard band showing up at Lee Jordan Field is huge. So I hope people will make it out to that. And then it, the mayor will probably mention this Friday, the Silk Road Dance Company with the free performance here is going to be very exciting. Little update that is exciting to know is that the Tacoma Junction parking lot, that staff are moving ahead with uh, the, with um finalizing the plan for managing that space so that everybody who needs it can use it for various things. And um, I think that's just about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Um, so yes, uh, there were a lot of things that happened over the weekend. So I'm gonna do a quick recap, but I don't want to repeat um all of the things that folks have already mentioned. The Hexahabitat Sculpture that is right outside of the recreation center. Local artists worked on it. It is amazing. So if you haven't had a chance to go out and take a look, please do. Um, and we celebrated that on Saturday. I was at the Truck Garden. I was at the canceled Flower Avenue uh event. And Pride was, as everyone has mentioned, amazing. I uh was giving out bracelets and I feel like I had over, there were over two hundred bracelets. And I handed off maybe like fifty, maybe, I don't know, less than that to Councilmember Weslek at her booth on my way out. And that just is indicative of the number of people that came out to celebrate Pride this year. So um, I am so appreciative to Laura Barclay and all of the work that she and our staff have been doing to make sure that these kinds of events that celebrate the diversity of our community continues to happen. In terms of things that are happening uh this week, uh tomorrow, I have the pleasure of um attending a celebration in recognition of Eric's ID Law passing. And the City of Tacoma Park um uh submitted testimony in support of the law. What it does is allow for people who have um non-visible disabilities to have a marker on their driver's license, um, which can help them in cases of um emergencies or if they're ever encountered, encountering the police and wanting to make sure that everybody knows how to um engage with them. So I'm super excited to be celebrating that tomorrow. I will be at the Colors of the Silk Road Free Dance Performance that will be happening on Friday. On Saturday at uh one o'clock is the Azalea Awards. There is still time to vote, I think. Yes, still time to vote. And so really want to encourage people to come out and celebrate all of the people who are doing great things in our community. And you can inform that process by voting um on the Tacoma Foundation's website. They have a link and you can vote for um Azalea Award recipients. Uh, the, on Sunday, I will be attending the House and Garden Tour, which if you haven't done it, it's actually quite fun. So Historic Tacoma hosts a House and Garden Tour where you get to walk through some of the historic homes. And I'm obsessed with HGTV, so I love walking through other people's houses. Also, Adult Play Day is on Sunday. So I'm at Bus Boys and Poets. I believe it starts at five thirty. I will be making the rounds to try to make sure I'm able to make it to the Adult Play Day. On Monday, I will be at Blair in the Morning, attending the Gen Z Political Advocacy Convention. It's one of the best um events. I love talking to students about their um, their event, about their posters and their projects. And I too will be meeting with youth. I am speaking to the Rolling Terrace third graders on Wednesday. All of them. So I will. They have been learning about pollution and over, I would say, maybe like forty students, over forty third graders, wrote me a letter about the pollution that they were seeing in the, um, along Sligo Creek and in Long Branch. And so I will be speaking to the third graders about pollution and about my role as the mayor and what we can all do to protect the environment. So there's the Where's Talisha for the next few days. But definitely uh look forward to seeing folks in the community um out and about. And so with that, I will turn things over to Deputy City Manager Eubanks. As um our city manager, uh, Mr. Desparter, I believe, is remote um this evening. Deputy City Manager Eubanks, are you gonna take care of those? Excellent. Let me make sure your mic is on. There you go.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, uh, councilmembers, residents, staff, and special guests. Just moments ago, I was asked to remind council to please uh speak loudly when you're using your mics. Sometimes uh the audience cannot hear you well. And um, if communication needs to turn up the volume, you get a lot of feedback. So please use your outdoor voices. From our police department, Tacoma Park Police Department is pleased to announce a second TagMate Air Tags giveaway event on Saturday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to two PM at the corner of Sligo Creek Parkway and Maple Avenue. As a part of our ongoing commitment to community safety, we will be distributing TileMate tracking tags to residents of Tacoma Park. These devices can be placed in vehicles to assist residents in locating the vehicles in the event of theft. We opt for TileMate due to its compatibility with both iPhone and Android devices. TileMate becomes the property of the resident upon distribution, and the police do not track these devices. Only the residents can track them via their phones. Eligibility requirements. Participants must reside within Tacoma Park City limits. Participants are required to present valid photo identification cards along with a matching vehicle registration and utility bill as proof of address. City of Tacoma Park employees are also eligible to receive TileMate if they meet the residency requirement. There will be a registration and educational booth. Distribution will be first come, first served while supplies last. So we encourage residents to arrive early. This event is a great opportunity for community members to protect their belongings and stay connected to the Tacoma Park Police Department's safety, safety initiatives. For more information, please visit our website and search TileMate. From our Recreation Department, on Sunday, June first, the Recreation Department had a successful adult doubles pickleball tournament. This doubles elimination tournament had ten teams competing for the championship. The games were action-packed, fast-paced, and very competitive. The championship game matched Dink Different, uh, Ben Terrace and Cameron Roman against the Kelly Boys, Ryan and Chris Kelly. Dink Different pulled out a tight win to capture the championship for a second year in a row. Everyone had a great time and we are looking forward to the next pickleball event. And from the city manager's office, tonight, we are proud to recognize our outstanding passport technician, Sophia Vizoraga. Sophia processes more than fifteen hundred passport applications each year. She does this so well and with a level of care, professionalism, and attention to detail that truly sets her apart. In fact, we recently learned that when the State Department encounters a particularly complex application, they often recommend that applicants meet with Sophia because they know she will be thorough, precise, and committed to making sure every detail is in place. That kind of reputation doesn't just reflect well on Sophia. It reflects well on the City of Tacoma Park. Her dedication helps residents navigate an important federal process with confidence and ease. Sophia, thank you for your exceptional service and for representing the city with such excellence. And this concludes the city manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move into our first uh item this evening, which is the first uh voting item. First reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter Six. Chapter six point zero eight, rental housing licenses and owner occupied group house registrations.
Hello, I'm Jessica.
Hold on one second. Okay, two acts separately. Okay, wonderful. You're ready to go.
Hello, I'm Jessica Troop. I am the Housing Department Housing Program Specialist. And we are going to give a quick overview again of the rental license ordinance changes that we're proposing, that it was the amendment to the rental license expiration dates, changing those from expiring at the end of the year to a rolling basis based on when they're issued. And then the change to the code to allow for us to issue a temporary rental license under limited conditions. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Wonderful. Are there any questions, um, members of council, before we move the vote? Just click your button. I will see if you have any comments. Okay. Not seeing any? Thank you very much. We're gonna move into the vote. Now, let's see if I can do this. Okay. I think I can. Now, everyone just needs to click your, click your, your mics. We're gonna move it, but we're gonna have to um do a roll call because Councilmember Dabala is virtual. Okay? But I want to make sure we, everybody is on the same page in terms of the mics. Would someone like to move the first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter six point zero eight, rental housing licenses and owner occupied group house registrations?
So move.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak, for seconding. Any points of discussion? Okay, seeing none? With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Searcy?
Aye.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dabala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Weslek?
Aye.
Wonderful. And everyone can click your buttons and that will take your mics off. Wonderful. Okay, we're gonna move into our work sessions for this evening. Just want to do a quick council check to see whether or not there's a need for a quick five, ten-minute break before we move into the work sessions.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
Will you indulge me to explain to the scouts why they have no idea what we just voted on? Just briefly. I just want to share with you that what happens on the council scouts, because you're learning how this works, you're probably thinking, I have no idea what they just voted on. How do they know what they just voted on? What, what happened is that um a few weeks ago, we got a presentation from the same folks that you just saw from our Housing Department that gave us all that information. So as citizens, if you would like to go back and see what it is that we were actually voting on, you could go back to the YouTube video or the notes from our meeting a few weeks ago and you would see what items we just voted on. And we are very satisfied as a council and that's why we had no questions. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Okay, just want to confirm because I know we've been since, okay, it looks like everybody's good. All right, we're gonna move into the work session. Okay, the first um item this evening is a plan, is planned applications for submission to the FY twenty-six State Revitalization Grant Program.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patty Mallon. I'm the grants manager for the city. And I want to talk to you about um three proposals that um HCD would like to submit with your approval to the state revitalization program. In the past, we have submitted really only under one category, the National Capital Strategic Economic Development, or NED, grants. Those are the ones that encourage funding for strategic investment in housing and businesses to encourage healthy, sustainable communities with a growing tax base and enhanced quality of life. This year, there's eight point six million dollars in funding available for capital awards. There's a tiny amount available for operating funds. We're not looking at those. This year, we also are applying to the Maryland Facade Improvement Program, the MFPIP, that is funding to improve the exteriors of businesses in Maryland Sustainable Communities, of which we are one. There is five million dollars available statewide for these facade improvement programs. We have a long and um a very successful history with DHCD, with the state. These are the active awards that we have with that department. Some of them are NED awards and some of them are other parts of DHCD, including the Psycho Mill Environmental Justice Award, which is um redoing the Psycho Mill area from it being a, you know, an illegal dumping site to being a lovely green space and much safer. Um, and then most recently, the Maryland Computer Lab Program. The others are very much um economic development-related projects. So every year, these happen every year. And every year, we talk amongst, in the department, what are our priorities? What's ready? Who's ready in the community? Right? The state wants to grant funds to projects that are set up for success. They want to know they're ready to go. So that's the first thing that we look at with the programs. We look at our internal capacity. What kind of support is that grant gonna need from staff? Sometimes it's very little. Of many of these, it's just us doing reporting periodically because we're funding a local business, for instance. Uh, we want to make sure they align with council priorities. In this case, they're all housing and community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. They match very well with those things. And also, we look to make sure that this funding source is the right one. You know, are we matched for success with this kind of funding source? We have a very good relationship with the staff at DHCD because of our long history. So that also is helpful in helping to decide what, what project should move forward. All right. Here are the three that we're looking at. First is the MFPIP, right? The uh, the um Facade Improvement Program. And you may remember that we used some of our ARPA funds last year to provide facade improvement grants to local businesses. We were able to fund ten businesses. It was very successful and we know there's a need for more. We've talked to um to Laura at Main Street Tacoma. We've talked to Javier at Crossroads. They've identified fifteen businesses. There are also those pockets of businesses that aren't represented right now by these different, you know, business associations. By the time, you'll see the timeline later in this. By the time funding comes around, if we're successful, we should have an economic development specialist in place, which will help us do outreach to those businesses that we weren't able to get to in that very short time we had to disperse that, those ARPA funds. So what you see on the screen here are three of the successful improvements that were made. The reappointing of the brick, the, some, there's some new neon around town that you might have seen. And we've also had just a couple of locations outside of Old Town in this previous one, including um the Pretty's Fashion and Jewelry. So we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna. So we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna continue the model that we've used successfully, which is capping awards at ten thousand dollars per business. The second one is a NED grant. We're looking at Sang Freud Distillery's expansion in the historic Bank of America building. They're gonna need help with the addition. They're gonna put on the back. So this seems like a good fit. It is a historic building. It's bringing in jobs into the community. It's gonna bring visitors to the community. This is gonna be a very nice destination. The expansion that they're talking about is also going to increase their ability to, their production ability. So they're gonna be able to, they try to source everything from Maryland growers, their grains, their fruit. They think that that might increase six times with this expansion. So we're asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help with that piece. They're hoping that the tasting room, those pieces will be done by the end of the calendar year if everything falls into place, but they still need to do that addition. So that's what we're looking at helping, helping to fund. And lastly, our friends at Mansa Kunda are hoping to relocate across the street. Ward Five immigrant-owned business, looking at the old ADU appliance store right across the street, which is much larger, has parking. We don't have confirmation that that sale's happening yet, but they're working on it. If it happens in time, we want to move forward with this proposal. If it doesn't happen in time, that may get pushed till next year, or we may help them try to find other funding sources to move that along, but that's exactly the kind of business that we want to support in the city. So the timeline, applications are due in about a month, July 2nd. We'll be notified in the fall if we are successful with one or more of these. We have been successful with none, two, three, or four at a time in the past. Grant awards get executed in the beginning of the calendar year, and at that, that's the point where funds become available. So most of these, in fact, all of these, there's leverage involved, but it's not the city money. We have, like, for the facade improvement grants, businesses have to contribute whatever's above that ten thousand dollar cap, right? The Sang Freud and Mansa Kunda are showing, they're, they're investments that already exist in purchasing, in, in development, all of those things. So that has to be shown as part of the application. It's not city money. We are facilitating, we're helping our businesses. We're not paying for these things. This year, however, there's a wrinkle. We just learned that the state is gonna charge a four percent award fee for successful applications. They tell us that that fee will be payable out of grant funds. I look forward to them explaining how that works, but if that happens, that would be the piece that's expenses that we wouldn't normally look at for a grant like this. For the two, it only applies to the NED grants, not the facade grant. So if either the Sang Freud or the Mansa Kunda applications are successful, there would be a six thousand dollar fee for each of those. That's the four percent of the ask. They tell us it's payable out of grant funds. We look forward to learning more about that. So we would love for you to pass the resolution on this, so we can include it with our application. So the state says yes, the city is behind this proposed work. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And all of the projects that you're describing are very, very deserving. I'm familiar with a number of them. That four percent just feels very wrong. So, so they're not considering it as like matching grant funds. It's, it's a fee, right? So it's not, wow, okay.
Yeah, and when they explained it during the information session, there was a, you know how things are. That's an exact quote. That's why we're charging this now. You know how things are. So I know their budget was cut for this program.
Right.
Right, funds are not nearly as robust as they have been in past years. So I think they're trying to find ways to continue to make funding available the best way they can.
Okay. I will make sure that I add this, this group on my list of folks to talk to during M M L. For the Richardson School of Music project, and I know that's an active one, do we, do we know where, where that one is in terms of its relocation? Okay.
Yes, they, actually, they have a general contractor. They just signed the contract for that, and I think they just paid the very first deposit on the general contractor, so they are moving along.
Excellent. I'm so excited. I can't wait. I'm telling people all the time. They'll be in the corner. Let's see, I see Councilmember. Councilmember Schlegel.
Am I on? Yes, okay. My outside voice. This is very well presented. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mallon, Mallon, Mallon?
Mallon.
Mallon, yeah. I just wanted to ask two questions. One, with the Mansa Kunda relocation, would this money, would any of this money, if awarded to them, go towards purchase? Or would it be, provided that they purchased, it goes towards build-out and changes in the building?
It would likely go towards the build-out because of how it's timed. In order to, to have a successful application, you have to show, like, basically ownership of the site, you know, access to the site. So they would have to have either a letter of intent or a signed key. So they should have moved beyond acquisition by the time these funds would be available. So we would definitely be looking at the build-out.
Okay, yeah, and I am aware that, you mentioned the parking, and I'm aware that the, the parking has gotten tight with Koma Cafe also opening on that block, yeah. So the other question I had was about equitable distribution of the facade improvement funds. And I don't know what the, the recent history across years is for, for where that facade improvement money has gone. But does, does the department track that? Do you track that? Like, how many places in Langley, Tacoma Langley Crossroads have received that help? How many places in Ward Five? Any other places outside, you know, or are, are we trending towards Old Town particularly because of the Historic District? I'm just wondering.
So I'm only familiar with this last round. Any other facade work the city did was before my time in grants, but I can speak to the recent round. It was mostly Old Town, but not by intent. Part of it was that ARPA deadline came upon us quickly. When we, so we have this money to support small businesses. We have to have contracts in place by the end of December. Here's a program we can do, because there's a need. And it turns out that Old Town businesses are better equipped to react quickly and respond fast. And also, the property ownership might be a different situation than you're finding, say, in the crossroads. We worked very closely with, with Tacoma Langley Crossroads, the Business Association, the Commercial Development Association, and they had to do a lot of handholding with the businesses, but also had some roadblocks with the owners of the larger shopping centers not being as responsive as they'd like. They needed more time. We didn't have that because of the ARPA funding constraints we were under, which is one of the reasons we're looking at this. Because this could be a two-year program, most of the NED, the NED grants, and so therefore, this would probably also a two-year program, which gives us more lead-up, more time to work closely with the property owners, but also the business owners. And hopefully, again, we would be staffed, staffed up with an economic development specialist who could do that kind of outreach to those places where we haven't hit yet. Pretty's was the only one in the crossroads. Koma was the only one, you know, in, in Ward Five. All the rest of them were Old Town-based businesses for this first round. We would love to see that spread out, and I think the pieces would be in place should we get this in this kind of timing, that we can really extend that outreach. And we've got a good system. We have the application, we have the eligibility, we know how to manage these, this process. Now, it's more about getting to the business owners who need it.
And so, thank you. And, yeah, so the equity is very important for me, especially hearing that OTBA got a fair amount, and given the way the process had to be. And so, if you have a, if you have a property, like, say, a strip, a, a strip property, say, in the crossroads area, is the, does the process have to be different, because they may want to bundle and have uniformity as they do facade improvement, and, and is the department, is, does that get too complex, or how does that work?
We did run into that with Pretty. There was another business, I can't remember right now, they, they couldn't do it in time, but the property owner did have their own requirements for what signs need to look like or what materials need to be used in the sign. So that had, that was part of it, which, if you know that upfront, that can be dealt with, especially when you have this kind of lead time. But yeah, that was definitely a piece of it. One aspect of the application process is getting the property owner sign off. That's an early step. When you get the application, you have to also send us this form that has the property owner saying, yes, I understand what they want to do, and I, I'm okay with it. That was a big holdup for some of those other businesses.
But it's doable with the strip piece. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you. I think this will tie nicely to Councilmember Schlegel's questions. I, I, this is actually the first I'm hearing about the Mansa Kunda potential grants. Really exciting, because I know that ADU building is empty, and everybody's kind of eyeing it to see what will happen. I was wondering, in, in, with respect to equity, so this happens every year, the, the, or is it a, every two years? Can you just remind me that the NED grant applications and the, I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. I get that, but so far, it's been happening?
It's an annual program. Grants are usually awarded for a two-year period.
Okay.
But that doesn't preclude you applying for a different program while you've got those others happening.
So, so with both of these two sets of grants, we would anticipate possibly that it could be on an annual cycle? Yes, I'm seeing a nod behind you.
So this batch, we would apply for this year. If we're successful, come January, we'd have two years to execute the grant. But by the next, by that June, we would be coming to you for more if we have other projects that could be done themselves.
Which is, so what I'm thinking is, I'm wondering, obviously, we're, we're a bit short-staffed right now. We're eager to get that economic specialist in place. But I, I guess I would like to offer to the staff, I think, probably, I can speak for most of us, if not all of us, in saying, I think we would be very eager to support you, your efforts as the staff in, or maybe I should just speak for myself right now, but I would be very eager to support the staff in that kind of proactive, really getting ahead of the game kind of outreach, where we could even develop shortlists of the businesses that are most likely to benefit, and then compare that against who's interested. And we can do that, you know, both with the, the business associations, especially the ones that might have a little bit more trouble chasing people, and then some of those that are outside of the, the areas that we have the business leagues. Because I, I know that in, in my ward, for example, I mean, the, the Long Branch Business League, it does take a lot of, you know, handholding, there are other languages involved, some, just different ownership issues. But we have definitely a lot of facades that could really, really benefit from this kind of funding. And, and it would, if we had the lead time, I think we could, could have that list ready to roll and, and people ready to jump on it as soon as you say, okay, that's maybe gonna come down the pipeline in June. So, you know, and let's potentially anticipate something like that, and then look towards that equity lens, and also just kind of the greatest needs across the city, like, wow, that facade could really use a lift. Anyway.
In, in this case, thank you. I would love that kind of help, absolutely. All the outreach. And we want to use all the channels available to us to, to reach the business owners that need to know about this. If we're successful with this grant application, we would know that we were approved probably in November. We wouldn't have funds available until, you know, the, the agreement's executed, which would be January or February, but that's some lead time right there. It's like, we know we can do this. We have the materials in place already from the previous version, so we know what, what eligibility looks like. We know what applicants need to provide. So we could start talking about it, doing that initial assessment or outreach as early as November if the state says, yes, we're going to approve this award, even if the award hasn't kicked in yet.
All right, just as a reminder, once you hit the button, you are no longer on the list. Councilmember Hansak?
I apologize. I was just thinking, so it could be really helpful, then, if, if this is not too much to ask, but to consider putting together maybe like a one-pager that we could hand out to some of the businesses with that timeline, I'm thinking, and, and something, you know, that we could, we could walk them through. This is, this is what this looks like. This is what could potentially be in it for you. We can't promise anything, but, you know, thanks.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Westlin?
Thank you. Thanks so much. This is a lot of really exciting stuff. On a similar vein, can you explain what the selection process would be for the facade? For, you know, if, if, say, we get the hundred thousand, ten K each, and we get fifteen, twenty applicants, how are you all, how are we deciding which businesses would be accepted?
So in the previous round, because it was, we have this amount of money and we want to spend it down, it was first come, first served. It actually worked out that everyone who was eligible, who was able to get through any property owner issues, was funded. So that worked. We haven't, it, it's a rolling application. It's not, you have to apply by March 1st, and we're gonna pick. It's a rolling application. We ask that the business owners get two quotes for whatever the piece is. If they have multiple things, maybe they're doing an awning and putting in safety glass. Show us two quotes for the awning, show us two quotes for the safety glass. You know, show us that you have the property owners, you know, okay, on this list, you are in good standing. All of those things are in place. We haven't considered, do we want to weigh this somehow? Do we want to allocate funds? We haven't written this proposal yet. We have written parts of this proposal, based on what we already know. So that could be a consideration. It's like, okay, we haven't, we haven't funded you, and here's Devon.
Hi there, Devon McNally with the Housing and Community Development Department. One of the things I do want to note is, with these grant funds, getting the dollars out the door is a really great way to get more grant dollars. So when we're able to show that this program is moving and getting funds into businesses, that actually makes us a more competitive applicant, applicant down the road. So part of the reason why a first come, first served approach works really well is, A, it encourages people to get everything in order and move quickly to kind of get those bids, line everything up. But then, B, it allows us to then go back to the state and say, hey, look, we did such a great job. We need additional funds.
The other piece that may help with the equity is that this year, all of the, the notifications from the state about different grant programs emphasize the Governor's Enough Program and those census tracts that are eligible for enough. And for us, we don't have any within the bounds of Tacoma Park, but the crossroads and Ward Five, but up against, you know, census tracts that are enough eligible. So that is a plus. So we can absolutely focus on that kind of outreach, and that's gonna help make the application more attractive to the state.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landman, and I just want to remind colleagues, we're nearing the end of our time for this conversation. So if you've already spoken, and unless it is something that is really critical, just want to ask folks to be mindful of the time. Councilmember Landman?
I'm not gonna take that personally.
No, it wasn't you.
This time.
Roger knew who I was talking about.
Thank you. This is a very, I, I found the way you presented this very clear, very helpful, so thank you for that. I've spoken to one small business in my ward, and not the neediest ward, I admit, but not every business is, is as well-financed as the others. And that, in that business, they indicated that they were required to spend the money upfront and then be reimbursed, at least for the grant proposal that they were familiar with. And I think that is actually an obstacle for some small businesses, especially the ultra-small businesses. So I wonder whether the city has an option of using some funds that we have available in other places to enable a small business to, for example, you know, borrow money very, in a very short term from the city, and then use the grant to reimburse the city, if that would help get those small businesses over the cash flow concern that they might have. And that, that, I'm asking about that because I think that it might be a way to address some of the equity issues for small businesses in Old Town, tend to have deeper pockets or better access to finance, and so that's why I'm wondering.
The, the nearest thing that we have, that we have used in the past, actually Richardson, for instance, when you're doing that kind of major renovation, there's a lot of big checks to write. So we created a request to pay the vendor directly. So if the, our, our grantee, our sub-grantee in this case, right, where, you know, in this case, say, Richardson School, says, okay, I've got this invoice, I've approved the work, the work is complete. Can you pay them directly instead of me paying them and then you paying me? And then the state paying us. And the state's always gonna pay us last, no matter what happens, right? We're gonna get reimbursed by the state eventually, but the actual spending happens prior to that. So that is a model. That is a model. We haven't implemented it at the scale, at the smaller scale yet. We've only used it for the larger pieces, but that does exist as a precedent.
And I might just briefly jump in. Part of the reason why is, we have a great finance team, and they are there to make sure that this money gets spent properly. And so, as part of our financial controls, we have to demonstrate that work is being done. And so as part of our financial controls, we have to demonstrate that work is being done. And so as part of, for example, paying a direct payment, we have to get from the business owner a sign-off that that work is completed to their satisfaction. So it is certainly something that we could implement, as Patty said, but it is partially a financial control as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Councilmember Schlegel.
Just a comment. So, Council, thank you. So Councilmember Landman said that some businesses will have better access to capital. And I'm, I'm also aware in talking to businesses like on New Hampshire that they don't have the best access to information. So I'm wondering if there's a way, I see the value of the, of the first come, first served, rolling application, but I wonder if there could be a lead time in which no applications are accepted once the information is out there, so that everybody has at least an even chance to figure some stuff out. Is that possible?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we can't spend the money until we have an executed grant agreement, but we're notified a few months ahead of time that that grant will, that we've been awarded that grant. So in addition to using it for outreach, we could say, here's what we're going to need from you. So they absolutely could be assembling, getting those quotes together, thinking about how they might want to fund this, all of that. We just can't act on any of that until we have an executed grant agreement.
Great. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for this presentation. I, I mean, I've seen firsthand the value of these grant dollars in the business community and in our home improvement, our big programs and all of those things. And so appreciate you all taking, taking the time to make sure that we're able to seek out these funds and ultimately bring them home, because we can see the, the fruits of that labor every time we look at things like different patios in front of the businesses and new businesses that are opening in our community. So thank you so much. And just as a reminder, this item will come back to the council in a resolution authorizing submission of the FY26 State Revitalization Grant Program Applications, and that will occur on June the 11th. Next item is the FY25 Budget Amendment Number Four. And we have our Finance Director, Director Chung.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give a summary of our FY25 Fourth Budget Amendment. On May 15, 2024, the City Council adopted the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget and followed by the approval of the First Budget Amendment on July 31st, '24, Budget Amendment Second on October 30th, '24, and Budget Amendment Third on March 19, 2025. Due to the operational needs and expenditure increases, further adjustments are necessary for Fiscal Year 25 Budget. The Fourth Budget Amendment includes the following adjustment items. In the general fund, the total adjustment is $156,358. That includes an increase of $4,000 for police, parking kiosks, increase of $5,000 for library program and outreach, increase of $7,358 to provide additional funds for HVAC control system in the equipment replacement reserve, increase of $55,000 to provide additional funds for ongoing library construction project, and finally, an increase of $85,000 for street resurfacing. This resurfacing, street resurfacing budget increase is included in here. However, it will be removed at the request of the Public Works Director. The updated change will be reflected in the first reading ordinance scheduled for next week. So it's included in this session, but it will be removed. And our Deputy City Manager, David Eubanks, can provide some explanation for the, for, regarding the removal later on. And second, we have the Special Revenue Fund Adjustment. And we have four new grant awards. The first one is the MEA Public Facility Solar Grant for $125,000. That includes the increase in both revenue and expenditure. The new grant award for the Computer Lab Program, $85,000. And a new grant award for the Azalea Sculpture Conservation, $21,200. And a new grant award for Chesapeake Bay Trust in an amount of $780. So these are the two main categories that we have the Budget Amendment, in the Fourth Budget Amendment. So on the last page of our covering memo, we include a table summarizing the balance and the percentage change in the Unassigned Reserve, along with estimated general fund balance following the First, Second, Third, and Fourth Budget Amendments. At the time of the FY25 Budget was adopted, the general fund and assigned reserve was $5.2 million. And the total fund balance was $12.6 million. Following the Fourth Budget Amendment, the projected unassigned reserve has reduced to $3.3 million. And fund balance has reduced, has decreased to $10.7 million. This reduction is primarily attributed to the following changes. The $20,000 expenditure increase in the First Budget Amendment, 892 cost reallocation from ARPA to the general fund in the Second Budget Amendment, and 865 net impact from increased expenditure and reduced revenue in the Third Budget Amendment. And lastly is the 156 expenditure increase in the Fourth Budget Amendment. As a result, the ratio of the unassigned reserve has declined from 16.9% at the beginning of the fiscal year to 10.7 after the Fourth Budget Amendment. So I'm happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
I want to allow Deputy City Manager Eubanks to explain the, what's happening in terms of the public works item that's being removed from this Budget Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the simple answer is that we intended to repave the Junction Parking Lot prior to the end of the fiscal year, and we needed some additional funds to do so. That is a part of the restructuring effort for the parking lot itself. The timing just won't allow. We are working pretty diligently with our IDIQ contract, NZI, to perform some other work in the city, to utilize our ARPA funds by the time we said we would. And so they are very busy in other places throughout the city, performing some infrastructure work. So they won't be able to get to the site in the timeframe that we thought they would. So the resurfacing of that lot will actually occur in FY26, and we have adequate money in the FY26 budget to account for that.
Okay. And does that have any impact on the timelines for?
No, the, the, our projected timeline for the restructuring of the Junction Parking Lot won't change. It will cause some minor disruption of about two, maybe three days when we actually resurface the parking lot in FY26, but otherwise, we're going to proceed with the restructuring as planned.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember, I think this is right, Councilmember Landman.
Thank you. Um, this question is from a new council member, meaning this is my first year arriving at the end of a fiscal year. My question has to do with the dip in the unassigned reserve. We have only one month left in the fiscal year, if I'm not mistaken. And is it less concerning to have this narrower gap between assigned, unassigned reserves and the amount we will need in, if everything is expended? If it falls in the last month of the year? Or is the 17% figure expect, that is the preferred or the ideal target? Something that should normally, if things were ideal, carry forward to the very end of a fiscal year?
Preferably, we want to maintain a 70% of our reserve target. Well, we can see that this dip is because of all the Fourth Budget Amendment. We originally had a 17% percent of the unassigned reserve. But this beginning balance of adopted budget, it was estimated around March of last year. So we still have to look for the actual expenditure that is coming to, to be substantialized at the end of the fiscal year. And it will take about, maybe, this now is June, we have to go through July and August, three more months before we can finalize how much we have in our expenditure total and how much we're going to receive in the revenue. So every year, there is a certain percentage of actual expenditure, which is less than the estimated amount. And as a result, our, knock on wood, our, our final unassigned reserve balance is normally above or around 17%. And last year, our unassigned reserve balance was about 26%. So I am, I am, I cannot say I'm confident, but I'm pretty comfortable that we may be able to reach that percentage by the end of this year as well. Unless there's some substantial change in our revenue collection or there is a sudden increase in our expenditure.
Great. Thank you, Director Chung, and for newer members of council. This is why I always say, oh, just give me the First Budget Amendment of the fiscal, of the fiscal year, because that's the one that you really do have a better idea of what your final expenditures and revenues are. The, the, the items in the middle kind of ebb and flow based on the cadence of procurements, but also based on changes that may happen in terms of revenue receipt. And, and that's one question, because I know that, you know, certain things like the red light cameras and the delays and that, and, and, you know, expecting that there may be a bit of catch-up that would have to happen for those funding streams. Is that still the case, that we won't know until that First Budget Amendment?
Actually, we, we, we had a very serious discussion with the Police Department team about the, the requirement for budget adjustment for the speed camera and red light camera fund. And we did an overview of the revenue that is going to, to receive by the end of the fiscal year, as well as the expenditure amount. Fortunately, we planned that most of our contract costs for the speed camera and also the red light camera contract costs, we have moved it to the ARPA fund. So in fiscal year '25. So even though with the shortfall of our revenue coming in for the red light, I feel comfortable that we won't need to do the same thing like last year, having to transfer money from general fund to the red light camera fund. So we, we, we would feel like that we're okay this year.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, and I saw Deputy City Manager Eubanks, you, you had your, your light on. I just want to acknowledge.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to add on to what Director Chung said. I, I agree that in an ideal world, you would maintain that 17% to answer your question, Councilmember Landman, because it suggests that we did everything perfectly. However, throughout the year, there will be fluctuations in revenues and expenses, and unexpected things will come up. And typically, our budget amendments reflect those unexpected items that we feel are very, really important to address, which is reflected in this Budget, Budget Amendment Number Four. So while it's ideal, I think to maintain the 17%, particularly at this late phase, I think the, that variance, that difference from the staff perspective is, is appropriate.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Eubanks. Councilmember Westlech.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm understanding everything correctly. So the next time we see this, it will not have the $85,000 street resurfacing, correct? Okay. So that, that brings then that final tally from 156 to 71,000.
Correct.
So, which also, also new. But it looks like comparatively of the budget amendments, that's very, very small.
Very small.
Like the prior changes move the needle a lot, whereas this one, it moves the needle very little.
Yes, yes. That, that's a very minimal change compared to the second and the third. But the First Budget Amendment is the, the least, has the least impact, because the increase was just less than 20,000.
Thank you, Councilmember Westlech. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you. Just a couple of footnotes before I ask your question. I'm sorry to be annoying tonight, but there's, it's not every day we get this many young people in the audience, and they look bored out of their minds right now trying to comprehend these numbers. So I'm just going to give you a few footnotes, and maybe some of the adults that are watching will also find it useful. So the fiscal year runs from June to July. I see a few nodding heads. Not everybody seems to know that. That's a federal government thing and also happens in our local government. And we're, we're looking here at these budget amendments, because we are, our main purpose up here is to pass the budget every year. That's what the City Council has to do. And this 17% unassigned reserve is something that we, the council, are trying to make sure happens every year, because that's our cushion. That makes sure that we don't overspend on our budget every year. And that's what Director Chung is talking about and we're asking about. And, and ARPA funds, which we're throwing around here, are the government funds that were given out by the national government to, to localities all across the country during COVID. And we were all put under the gun to spend them down quickly or they would get taken away. We had to have them all allocated. So we're now in the process of making sure that all those contracts are fulfilled. So thank you for indulging me once again, and just trying to keep you guys alert and not bored. And, and one more question. You know, we, we, again, for the scouts' sake, we have, you finally see the new library is about to be finished. It's going to open up in September, I think. So I just have a quick question. I think I heard that 55,000, there's been a 55,000 increase for the library construction project. Can you just speak to that briefly? I know that residents have been very alert to anything where we mention the library, so if you could just comment, thank you.
Director Chung, I can take that one.
Okay. Thank you.
As you, as you suggested, Councilmember Hansak, we, we are very close to finish. And there are just a few pending change orders that we have, have accounted for within our existing budget. However, as we approach the end of the project, there are a few things that could surprise us that we want to account for. And so if you, if you take into account kind of the current sources and funds, we are literally at zero in terms of expenses matching our, our, the dollars that have been allocated to the project, including contingencies, which is not really a good place to be. So we want to allow for just a little bit of cushion in case some minor things come up over the next couple of months as we close this thing out. It could very well be that, that 55,000 is returned back to unassigned reserve. That's the hope. But this is just to, to, to temper, I think, our expectations.
Okay, sorry, Mayor. We're getting used to these new mics. I was trying to be polite by turning mine off. Just a, a quick follow-up then. So you said that we're down to zero. Do we have, is that a separate pot of funding that's going to be used for the actual move? Because it doesn't look like the move has taken place yet, right?
When I say zero, I mean it theoretically, in terms of all of the dollars that will be spent.
So we have, so we have, okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
And just to, to be clear, this is just adding to the contingency in case we need additional funds.
Right. That 55 has not been designated for anything specific to date.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Schlegel.
All right. Well, I think Councilmember Hansak asked my question, so I'll just say for the Boy Scouts in the room. So I'll just say for the Boy Scouts in the room that you can see that contingency funds, as well as unassigned reserves, fit in with the idea of be prepared, right?
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, Director Chung. And I'm sure the the scouts that are here have have received lots of education regarding municipal budgeting, their careers in municipal budgeting. If you like this kind of thing, you can you can become Director Chung in the future.
Yes, yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. And and again, we appreciate all of the work that staff is doing to close out this fiscal year, but also being mindful of our future needs as a city as we're we're ending a couple of projects at the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. The next item is renewal of contract for engineering services with Rommel Klepper and Call? Con, Call? I'm going to get that right eventually.
Evening, Council. Daryl Braithwaite, Public Works Director for the city. What you have in front of you tonight, the next two agenda items, are renewal of existing contracts with new contracts. About ten years ago, the city embarked on an effort through contracts awarded through Montgomery County for what we identified as an indefinite quantity of of work for some specific tasks. The first you have in front of you is our engineering services. So we contract with two engineering firms in the past who are on county contracts that have been competitively bid. We have the ability to ride on those contracts. And we have the same stipulation of a five-year, potential five-year term, a first term of three years and then two additional one-year terms should the city manager agree to the fourth and the council agree to the fifth. So that's what you see in front of you for both of these. We've had a long and very productive relationship with Rommel Klepper and Call, R K K, much easier to say. They've been involved in quite a number of projects for us, simple projects like sidewalk design. They've assisted us with stream restoration projects like we did at Tacoma Branch. And they've also been involved with traffic calming projects and hiker biker safety. Most recently, some of the grant funds through HCD, Rommel Klepper and Call was the awarded vendor. In those cases, they competed independently and separately for those. But for some of the ongoing budgeted work that we have in the city's budget every year related to sidewalks, stormwater and street work, particularly when it requires just engineering design, we select from each of those companies for various projects.
Great. So I just want to check to see if there are any questions about this contract before we move into a quick discussion about the next. Okay, Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you, thank you, Director Braithwaite. Just to ask, like, when when we have this kind of relationship with a a contract that rides on the county contract, does that put us at risk in any way? I don't mean that, I don't, I mean, I completely trust the staff's care with all this. But how do we maintain independence in evaluating the cost effectiveness of the services? And or or do we track what what the company's fees have have how they've moved over the years with the county since we're riding on that same rate, I assume?
Yes, it is an indefinite quantities rate. So they they bid by item. So they identify specific, in in cases with engineering design, it's hourly rate for various levels of technical staff, whether it's their GIS people or a civil engineer or oversight. And they have the public education and outreach component of that baked in. So they have hourly rates. It's the same fee that they charge the county. So it's those same hourly rates that are identified. And the county is set up to evaluate that that rate. It's one of the one of the things they evaluate when they're awarding a contract, that they're competitive and that they pass muster with reference checks. When we first started, we interviewed a wide number of engineering firms that all had county contracts to select the one that we thought would be the best fit for the city. Because there's some that really would not be a good fit. They're used to different types of projects. They're not really as adept at the direct community outreach that is a component of of most of our work. So we selected R K and K through that project originally. And over the years, we've found them to be very adept and good at what they do. And because they've also competed independently with other contracts outside of the county and outside of our own, it shows us that they are very cost effective and competitive in the field.
Okay, thank you very much. Director, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, would you?
I haven't anything more to add, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, seeing no more lights. We're going to move to the next item. The single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for an indefinite quantity quantity architectural services with Bignell, Watkins and Asser.
Yeah, this is along the similar lines. We've had an ongoing contract with Bignell, Watkins, Asser for many, many years. We've actually changed counties that we're writing the contracts on over time as they're awarded various contracts. Some of the work that we've had done through Bignell, Watkins and Asser includes the Public Works facility where that was where the city first hired them. They actually were the firm that designed the fire department, which is where we first became familiar with them and worked with them quite extensively. They won the bid when we went out to bid for the Public Works Phase One. And so that was our initiation with them. They've also been involved in the finance office renovation, server room renovation. They've done a design concept for the HCD space renovation. And they've also looked at various other space renovations around the building. Many of those we haven't moved forward on. We just did a concept plan and and set it aside as construction funds were not available. And most recently, they've been involved with the multi-year project of the atrium close out, closing and the lower level community center renovation. So we anticipate in through this contract that they we have a few known projects that we would expect to work with them on. One is we have a proposal from them from the previous contract for the construction management oversight once the construction project on the lower level gets underway. Since they are very familiar with the project and the scope of work and the specifics, it makes sense to continue with them. We also have a proposal for Arcadis that has been very effective with working with us on the library project. So though that's the most immediate project that we have going, we also have the potential of them assisting in the Phase Two Public Works renovation project. And again, because they were the original firm that we hired to do the full concept plan and then it was narrowed down to Phase One and Phase Two, they've got all the background information, all the original drawings. They've done the, you know, construction analysis work. So we feel like that would be a very efficient and effective way to kind of hit the ground running with that project. There may be other projects that come up over the course of the term. It'll be a, I can't remember, this one's a two-year and then three one-year extensions or three-year and two one-year extensions, but I don't remember.
Three and two.
Okay, still three and two. So, you know, as council approves funds and other projects are identified, we have them available should we feel like it's the right fit. If we have a project where we think we need a more specific expertise in architectural services, we don't have to use them. It's just an option that streamlines the process for us should we want to, you know, get them to work on a specific project.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments on this one? Councilmember Westle.
Thank you so much. My question, definitely chalking up to new council member and I, this might not be a question for you. What is the significance of mentioning mentioning the counties? Like in this one, it cites that they have a contract with Frederick County. And why does that matter?
The particular of which county doesn't really matter. It just is trying to identify that they are a, they want to bid. They competed in a competitive bid process for a county. It could be another city we could, and we have the ability to ride on a contract that's been competitively awarded by another jurisdiction. And so it's just identifying the source of that. We didn't run the RFP originally. The county did, we're participating on their bid award.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Westle, Councilmember Hans, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lammon.
I just wanted to follow up on one thing you said about the construction management, potential for this firm to also be a competitor perhaps with Arcadis for that role? I'm not sure I understood that and if you could just explain.
Sure.
Would they potentially be both the architect for a project and the construction manager?
Yeah, it's a, and I'm probably using the wrong terms. Currently, for the library project, Arcadis is a construction manager and RRMM, the architect, serves as a contract oversight. So there, all parties are in the room when there's change order discussions, when there's the regular meetings. So the architect, as well as the construction manager and the contractor, are all present when working out those particular issues and doing updates of schedules. So yes, with projects, you tend to have the architect's representative throughout the project into construction, as well as the construction manager, who's sort of a independent third party that looks over both the architectural work as well as the contractor work. And in some ways, mediates or gives advice to the city based on change order reviews and those kinds of things.
So they would play pay, play one of those roles, not two of them? And Arcadis would still play the third in that scenario? Okay, thank you, I misunderstood what you were describing.
Yeah. Yeah, I probably have said construction manager and me.
Administration.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, wonderful, seeing no more lights or questions. Thank you so much, Director Braithwaite. And just as a reminder for my colleagues, these items will come back before us next week as we will have our single reading ordinances on them. Okay, and the next item, the last item for the evening is renewal of service and equipment contracts with Axon. And with that, I'll turn things over to our chief of, Chief of Police.
Good evening, Mayor Hershey and councilmembers. I'm pleased this evening to bring forward a proposal to bundle four contracts that we have with Axon Enterprises. It's our body worn camera contract, it's our in-car video contract, and that's the the video surveillance, our video monitoring in our vehicles, our tasers, as well as our interview room recordings. There are significant savings associated with with bundling these contracts. And I'll turn it over to Captain Matthew Mazzati, who will provide detail about the bundling of the four contracts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Captain Matt Mazzati and tonight I'm going to be walking you through our proposed contract renewal with Axon. Just to start, we're here tonight because we want to review the four contracts we have with Axon. Again, as the chief mentioned, one contract deals mainly with our body worn cameras and tasers. Another contract is for our fleet cameras. Another contract is for our interview hardware. And another contract is for our interview software. The goal of this is to achieve cost savings, of course, and working closely with our Axon representative, bundling these four contracts together would result in a significant, significant amount of savings. So currently, as I stated previously, we do have four separate contracts out and they're staggered in expiration dates. The current contract we're about to renew now is our body worn camera and taser contract, which is expiring this summer, with another two set to expire in twenty twenty-seven and another one in twenty twenty-eight. And currently, all combined total contracts is eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's spread over a five-year contract. Our proposed bundle merges all four contracts. And with that merge, they will cancel out our previous contracts that would get merged. So we wouldn't be on the hook for that money. Annual cost would be a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And this includes outfitting all of our patrol officers and criminal investigations with body worn cameras, the upgrade to the Axon Body Four camera, the Taser X deployment, new Fleet Three cameras, interview room hardware and software, and virtual reality training modules plus TAP refreshes. TAP stands for Technology Assurance Program, which basically it's Axon's promise that as technology and equipment wear down, they will renew our equipment over the span of the contract. And if new technology comes out, they will provide us with that that equipment. Cost comparison, this is just a simple graph and it's the only graph you're going to get because I had to make this really fast. If we bundle now over a five-year contract, we're going to be spending nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And if we don't, it's going to go up to one point three. Axon has baked in a eight to ten percent inflation rate into all of their contracts now. If we only renew our body worn camera and taser contract this year, it's going to be a seven hundred thousand dollar contract. The one point three million comes if we include renewing our fleet and interviewing hardware and software over when they're set to expire in twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight. And the reason of this is that bundling includes a significant amount of savings that Axon provides to all of its customers. That total amount of savings is four hundred and nine thousand dollars that over five years are included. This graphic at the bottom, that's in the agenda item as well. This also reduces our burden of constantly renewing contracts over a spread of year by year. Now we'll just have one to renew every five years. And this also locks in our pricing in case of supply chain issues or just federal government issues over the next course of this administration. Again, we're going to see a one hundred percent discount of Axon Performance, a software that's going to help us monitor body worn camera activation rates. We're receiving a discount for all of our fleet cameras, about forty-seven thousand dollars. The officer safety plan is a item that Axon offers, which is basically what they give the base model to any department, which is body worn cameras and tasers. That's discounted by a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That also includes things like equipment, like cartridges and holsters and things of that nature. We're also getting Fleet Three Advanced discounted by an additional hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Camera bundle discounted at a hundred percent. And we're getting all new interview room hardware and software discounted at a hundred percent. And we're going to receive instructor courses for five police instructors for the new Taser X. That's going to roll out soon. Technology upgrades that we're going to see in this contract, again, I mentioned the Axon Body Four enhanced stabilization. It's just better quality video for all officers using it. The Taser X includes extended range and improved targeting. Axon did a a a good amount of research in what officers are using now, which is the Taser Seven, which has resulted in officers failing to achieve neuromuscular incapacitation just based on range, can and angle of the intended target. The Taser X addresses that issue. Fleet Three cameras will now include live streaming, streaming and AI enhancements. And we're also going to see VR training modules rolled out, which will improve our training with our firearms unit. Rather than waiting a year to secure a venue for officers to train in, our firearms unit can actually conduct training inside of our roll call room or another venue and get our officers more time in real ti- real life scenarios. and get our officers more time in real ti, real life scenarios. And of course, this in, continuous recording and live streaming of our, or streaming device with our body cameras is, helps with our transparency. Evidence.com is what we use to store all of our data, is secure, and it's in compliance with all FOIA regulations. It also, it's in compliance because it has audit logs and chain of custody tracking. Moving forward through this. Axon is a sole source provider, there's no other company that bundles everything together that a department needs. And that includes body cameras, tasers, fleet, and interview room. And we have reviewed this. If there is another company that were to come out when this contract expires, we're open to innovation. But until then, we're just trying to maintain costs. And lastly, this supports our fiscally sustainable government and service oriented responsive operations.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you, thank you so much, Captain Sadi. Okay, I'm not using my, my council voice. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay. I, it seems like this is very cost effective, just based on what I'm looking at here. Particularly, I like the part about locking in our pricing over the current administration, because there's so much unpredictability, even though I do see eight to ten percent inflation is, you know, a tricky one. It's, it's on the higher side, I would say, but I think we're seeing a lot of high inflation in general, and the ups and downs are probably worth that, that good cost savings. My question is, I, I am intrigued by, maybe you could just share and elaborate a little bit. We can see technology is moving so fast right now, and I'm sure you're mindful of that. I was happy to see the word AI in relation to at least one of the technologies. But let's say that we find ourselves over the next five years with either a legal framework change that affects the police force and the kind of technology that you are expected to use based on just kind of what's going on, or something that comes out that we haven't even thought of yet? Or if you need to drop something and, you know, pick up something new possibly? I, I, I mean, I, I'm totally naive about police technologies, really honestly, but I just can see how very, very quickly a lot of this stuff is moving, particularly the application of AI to the kinds of tech that you're using. So how much wiggle room, I guess, is what I'm asking? Do you think you've got in the contract that you're talking about negotiating? And we don't want to put our future councils, of course, in a situation where they're trying to figure out how to help you navigate those, those technological hurdles.
Well, that's where the TAP refreshes come in, the Technology Assurance Plan. As technology improves over time, Axon has included in their contract that we will be, we will get access to that new technology. Now, if there was some sort of legislation that restricts us from having that technology, we would just omit to use it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Gilbert?
Thank you, Mayor. Well done, Captain, and again, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Quick question, I was just curious. You mentioned live streaming for the Fleet Three cameras, can you explain that a little bit more? What's that look like? Where would, where would we be live streaming to?
So all of our cameras, when they're on but not recording, they're in streaming mode. And Axon runs a software called Axon Respond, which gives anybody with access to evidence.com, mainly police officials and police officers, we can actually view the camera in real time. That's the, the new goal, is to give people the ability to view the streaming. It won't have sound until the, the camera is actually activated. But that's what our, what our cameras are now capable of doing, is streaming at all times while they're on. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you very much, very helpful presentation. And I, I have a question that derives a little bit from the discussion last week about the reimagining policing task force and its recommendations. And a question that came up then, which has to do with how the information in the Axon system, which I understand is, they're the only game in town, I have no, no argument with that. But the question is, what kind of firewall, if any, one is capable of constructing? If Axon, for example, is, you know, required by the federal government to surrender data that we normally, in, in the normal course of events, would not be surrendering? If there's anything like that in the system? From what I understand from my conversations with you and other members of the department, these cameras are going to be capturing in the vehicles, all kinds of vehicle identification based on license plates and so forth. And I just wonder whether in any way there are constraints on that data being transmitted directly to, you know, ICE or other agencies? Maybe this is, it's obviously not the subject of the contract, but I'm just wondering, since Axon seems to be doing this for everybody, probably including the federal government, from what I've understood.
If I understand you correctly, that you're, you're wondering if the federal government can take our data that we collect directly from Axon? Now, I can't speak directly to what Axon does with their own data, but our data is actually secured within evidence.com. And if the federal government wanted access to our data, they would have to, they can't use Axon as their third party to collect that data. It's protected under audit trails and chain of custody, and it's FOIA compliant, so. To, to the best of my knowledge, the data is protected within our agency.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Just checking to see if there are any other questions. One of the things that I will just say and echo the points that were raised previously, well done. When there is a sole source, which means there is no other game in town, and yet you still figure out a way to save money? Awesome. You know, definitely recognizing that there are services that just, we need to have, and equipment we need to have to be a full-service police department, right? And the fact that you all have been doing your due diligence to identify ways in which we can potentially save monies to continue to provide the great services that our police department provides is critically important. So thank you all so much for, for doing the legwork and, and working out, dare I say, working out this deal. All right, I am not seeing any other lights. And so with that, that is our last agenda item for this evening. And so it looks like Councilmember DeBala is.
I'm still here.
Barely, I feel so bad. All right, so with that.
Don't feel bad, that's all it sounds like. Feel great, that's clear.
Wonderful, okay, so with that, I'm gonna call this meeting to adjourn. Just want to make sure everybody's okay with it before I bang this gavel. Excellent, have a great night, everybody.